Ms. Sheila, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Landsman. Mr. Furman.
Present.
Mr. Cowan.
Present.
Mr. Torres. Dr. Hans. Pastor Jones.
Here.
Ms. Root.
Here.
Ms. May. Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Dr. Giles. And... Ms. Newman.
Present.
Okay. So... Dr. Hans.
She just came in.
Okay. Dr. Hans is here, so... So you do have forum on your committee? And...
Thank you.
Mr. Cowan, you also have forum? You also have forum?
For our committee, okay. Thank you. Um, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment online?
We do not have any public comment on the online forum or in the chat.
Okay. Do we have public comment in the building? Did anyone sign up?
It's anonymous public comment. I believe public comment will be talked about this evening, so we can... It doesn't state first or second session, so we can defer to this.
Okay. Thank you. I need approval for our agenda.
It's all moved.
Need support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cowan for the finance committee.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a quorum of the finance committee, so at this time I'd ask Mr. Franklin, our interim CFO, to please come forward, uh, to discuss our most recent financial report and related matters.
Question of our mayor for Sheila. Pastor Jones is still not assigned to committee. Are we gonna do that before, during, or after week?
Um... I believe that would have take pla... Well, I'll defer you guys. I believe it would have to take place at a board meeting.
Yes.
At a general board meeting, so we'd have to do it.
We should discuss it at the end of the, you know, end of the meeting, and then we can...
Mm-hmm.
All right. Welcome. You're a regular now.
I'm presenting the, um, April financials. Um, this is October twenty-two, October first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This report, it shows the monthly dollars. Red shows the DABS amount. Um, it's our biggest revenue source. It, uh, stands for disabled, aged, and blind. And then the TANF piece is the temporary assistance for needy families. Next slide shows the, um, eligible. Red is the smallest amount or the smallest, um, eligible number, but it's equates to the largest dollar amount for our budget. Most of the revenue is pretty consistent. Especially Medicaid. Medicaid revenue, most of it is consistent. Especially Medicaid. The line bar across the... On report. So when we look at the revenue, can you go back, Sheila? Go back another one.
Go back to the first, to the revenue.
Revenue report, it shows, um... It's pretty consistent, and the line bar across the top is the FY twenty-two data, and the bar chart represents the fiscal year twenty-three data. Shows the eligible's. Um, as we said, the red was the DABS. It's the lowest volume of people enrolled. However, it's the largest dollar amount for our budget. This is data for six months, October first, twenty twenty-two through April first. Those are assets, liabilities. Those are assets for, um, for six months of operations. Assets minus liabilities equal net position. Receivables received from September to April. It's totally reflected in our cash, and you can see that the receivables went down, but it's not totally reflected in our cash. But if you look at, uh, the next slide, you'll see that the payables went up. And so because our receivables went down, you don't necessarily see that reflected in cash, but if you look at it, you'll see that the debt went down. All other categories, um, on the next... All the other categories remain consistent from September through April, other assets and capital assets. If you look at assets, you'll notice that our liabilities did go down as well, and that means we paid some debt that was owed to balance out. Don't necessarily show reflecting cash, but it does reflect in the reduction in our liability. Total assets, um... Those are liabilities, and then it shows our net position. Position, um, for our... Thirty is five fifty-eight million. That's sort of about two million year-to-date. Net position shows all of our assets minus our liabilities at this time. Position has decreased, um, by two million as October first through, uh, April thirtieth. Part of that is due to, um, cost settlement, CCBHC, that we received additional funding and caused our... They also removed our accruals out of our accounting system. What you see, what you see in our financials is actual. It's, uh, it's no accruals included, and so it, it, it reports actual revenue and actual expense for that period. Third, we got a cost, a CCBHC cost settlement to the tune of about five... Were paid by that much, and the department reimbursed us for that amount. Also, we, uh, received performance-based incentive... Payment from MDHHS, um, which is attributed to, um, a good... Changes that occurred in our, um... Over the accruals was, um, we took out some of the PA two, um, accruals, and we made it actual, because sometimes you get PA two money, and it don't come on a one-twelfth basis. You get it periodically. And I believe during the previous month, we had accrued for that money that was coming, but we're just showing it actual as we receive it, and we'll explain the variances as they occur based on a, um, cash received and expenses incurred basis. This next, uh, this slide that we're looking at right now shows revenue comparisons, uh, year-to-date from twenty twenty-two at this time versus, uh, twenty twenty-three data during the same period. It compares, uh, twenty-two activity to twenty-three activity during the period. During year-to-year, uh, we're higher in revenue year-to-year. As you can see, um, the green bar shows a higher revenue than twenty-two's data, which is red. And in comparison, our expenses for the year were higher in expense as well. All of our data is based off our VA two budget, um... Receivables compared to our PA two, uh, VA two budget. Revenue minus expenses at the same time last year as we're showing this year, um, they were in the surplus. But at this time, we're showing, um, uh, two million.
Patrick, is that, is that cumulative through that point in time that six million dollars is, I mean, I'm sorry, six months?
Yeah.
Two million dollar deficit?
Uh, once we removed all of our accruals, that's actual cash receipts and actual... We wanted to show a more accurate picture, um, of... About some of the projections to show you exactly where we are, um, year-to-date as of April thirtieth.
Patrick, so that's where we are with six months into the year. We're now near, well, we're more than halfway through the month of June, so, you know, for all practical purposes, we're at nine months with three months to go. Are we on that same burn rate where that number will... Will it stay level there, or will it get worse?
Go ahead.
That's basically where I'm at.
Okay. Yeah, we're seven months in now. Um, when you're doing it based on the cash receipt actuals and you're not looking at accruals, um, you know, it's the timing of when payments hit a lot of times. So next month, you might see, um, something, and, you know, the timing of the payment, it may have hit during the end of the month, the first of the month, and it might not reflect in that month's, um, financial statement.
Right. But sooner or later, we're gonna get to September thirtieth.
Right.
This year. That's the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
And so will, will the numbers be where we're at? Will they, will they be far worse?
Well, you know, I, I wish I could say. Um, I don't, I can't project it, um, right now and say what it is, but I can just record where we are as of right now. Um, I think we've done a lot of good things to monitor closer, um, with quarterly, um, FSR reviews to see where we, what we're paying providers versus what's, um, being expensed. So we try to stay as close as we can to the payment as what the expenses are, so that we don't have no real big surprise that you're in.
Go ahead.
There are quite a few things that we're looking at, and having a deficit reduction plan includes really looking at those redetermination rates and making sure that we're actively involved in ensuring that individuals are being redetermined for their Medicaid. One of the things, that's mine fell over, sorry. But one of the things that's critical on the first slide that Patrick presented is the DABS. That's the disabled, aged, and blind. You really wanna see that number be the highest number, because the people we serve have... They're developmentally disabled. So that number, you wanna make sure that those individuals, when they're redetermined, actually stay in that category. The TANF is a much lower rate. It's like comparing two hundred and fifty dollars for a DABS to twenty-five fifty dollars. So we wanna make sure that we're in, have individuals enrolled in Medicaid under the DABS. So that's gonna play a big part in making sure that people get redetermined, that we're helping them to apply for Medicaid. The other thing that we're looking at is at our hospital costs, a lot of that had to do with a lot of single case agreements. So we had a lot of cases where we were doing, even if we had contracts, providers were asking, hospital providers were asking for... So in many cases, that position and that decision was made by our vendor. Making that, um, decision back internally and doing our own utilization review process for asking for, um, an out-of-network or higher rate, um, that is because it's needed and not because they don't have a contract or they don't wanna stick to our standardized rate. Our provider has no particular incentive to make sure that those costs are controlled, so we're taking that back in internally. Um, several other things that we're doing is making sure that... Also looking at, like Patrick said, looking at what our actual positioning is and not adding funds until we actually receive those funds. I'm sorry.
At the SARS for some of the new board members.
Financial status report that we get from our providers. So that's gonna be huge, because it's looked at quarterly, but by the time, if you're not looking at trends as the year progresses, you can be in the hole and be providing payers, I mean, providers, more funding than the actual use of providing those services. The other thing that we're determining is that rates are not standardized. We wanna make sure that rates... From transportation, for example, those rates that we pay a twelve, a twelve, a twelve to more, but we don't really look at those encounters to ensure that those services were actually provided. By looking at that on a quarterly basis, we can control our costs much better. The other thing we were doing, again, as a part of COVID, is that we were doing provider stability. So if a provider said, "Hey, I'm struggling because of the pandemic. We need payments to help us get through the year or keep our doors open," we were looking at that, and a lot of times, those payments were approved. So now we're digging deeper. So when a provider requests a provider stability payment or an adjustment to their non-succeed amount on budget, we're looking at that more intently to make sure that that is an actual need and that they're managing their business appropriately.
Uh, there was one item that, the one provider was owed close to four million dollars, if I'm not incorrect about that. Has that been settled, or what is the status of that?
Yes, that, that has been... You're talking about, um, the cost settlement at the year-end?
Yes, okay.
Okay, yeah, we, we settled that. That's, that's already been cost settled. It's been submitted in our year-end results, and that has already...
And my, uh, second question is the hospital, hospitalization. So these are sort of speak out-of-network hospitals, or we don't, or we don't have a contract with them, or what, what is the explanation for that?
Most of the hospitals we do have a contract with. There are some hospitals that have taken longer because they want those increased rates without justifying medical necessity. So with that, we've addressed it, and most of our hospitals that we work with on a regular basis do have a contract. We know that there are situations, even if we have a contracted hospital, where the need is more because we have somebody who is a familiar face to us that we know needs more in terms of services and support. So we may negotiate at a higher rate because no one else will accept this person. So in most cases, we do have a contract. Negotiate at the time of trying to get someone... And in those cases, an intense clinical... It'd be happening and not just saying, "Okay, we'll give you more money if you don't want to look for another provider."
A little bit interesting to me, because most hospitals have contracts with CMS, and that's kind of...
Well, it's different for Medicaid, and it's different for the PIPs. Each ha, each region, I should say, or PIPs. So one of the things that would make our system, uh, better is that if we had standardized rates across the state. So there's a lot of competition because of the number... If a hospital doesn't have inpatients, they can't... Well, sometimes that takes longer, and of course, you wanna move the indiv... I'm sorry. Move the individual, and I saw the hand signals over there. Move the individuals, um, as close as home as you can get them. You don't want them to have to go out of state or out of the county to receive care, but sometimes we have to make those arrangements.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin, I have one question related to, on the liabilities comparison chart, uh, where it said due to the state, six hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Could you tell me what that is?
Liabilities?
Yes.
We cost settle, um, at year-end with the state. Sometimes there's money owed, and that's what that represents.
Okay. So that's going forward for this fiscal year right now?
Pardon me?
So that's, uh, the amount we're at right now for this fiscal year?
Um, I'm trying to see where you, where you...
It was on your, on liabilities comparison slide?
You have it on revenue right now. There it is.
Okay, due to state, yes. So that just breaks out, um, our liabilities, what we owe, um, and I think that, that is our run from October one through October to April thirtieth, and it shows that our due-to-state, um, actually went down from the beginning of the fiscal year to now. That means that, um, what was owed was paid, and that liability went down.
Okay. So that's the balance?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's part of that increased cash that we saw on the assets. A lot of, some of it was used to pay down the debt.
Okay, you continue with your...
Okay.
With your report.
I believe I got to the... Is that where I ended up at? I think, I thought I was at the last, last slide. So it shows... Pretty covered that one. So that just shows the top fifteen providers, and, um... Pretty much stay the same throughout the course of the year. Tells us what descriptions of services they provide. But right now, um, we're close to our audit completion, and a lot of these numbers are, for previous year, are all finalized, pretty much. Um, you'll be presented with that report on next week to show exactly where we, our final numbers are, and, um, you'll be presented with a draft at that time. Happy to know that our audit went well.
Okay, and I think we asked that not only have the draft audit, uh, but also the draft management letter that they...
Yes.
Okay.
They'll have that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, what else do you have for us here? The monthly trends, I think, are...
Um, if there's any, not any more questions about the financials, um, you can go ahead into the next presentation if there's, there is one, an update for... Budget response plan. Um, I think some of the things were mentioned during the presentation with some of the questions. Um, we know that, as of year-to-date, we are showing a two, two million dollar shortfall. We was projected, right now, our net position is roughly about fifty-eight million. Some of the contributing factors, you know, and also we did project, um, we did budget based off on that eight million dollar deficit budget for this year, and so some of it is not a big surprise that we show, um, two million deficit at this time. Some of the contributing factors, however, are the public health emergency, um, sort of CCBHC, which, um, we're glad to know that, um, we have received, when we, we paid over last year, we got refunded the difference, and we did remove our accruals out of this year's, um, financials, which shows accurate reflection of where we are with our, with our CCBHC. Previous provider financial status reports practices, um, we just mentioned that we're looking at, looking at them more frequently to review where we are, so we're more closer to budget to actual and more closer to, uh, expenses paid as things, as they are incurred. And then single case hospital rate utilization management, continue to look at that to, um, get a more, better projection on how, um, a hospital's utilization is being managed. We do have single case hospitalization, uh, rates that, I think Dana mentioned, that some cases are, um, severe enough where everybody won't, are not able to provide service, and so they, they have arrangements through single case agreements, and so there's been looked at closely as well. And then, uh, response details. We mentioned the FSRs more frequently, um, single case agreement process, um, review existing value-based service models, um, and then implement a process for provider stability payments. Um, I know at the end of this year, all of our, um, providers are off the cost reimbursement, and will be back on the service models. Um, because of that, I believe the vocational and CRU are the only ones that still remain on, uh, cost reimbursement. And the residential went back to their regular funding structure as of four-one, and we have, um, allowed stability payments for those providers, um, and we haven't had any, um, requesting it, which is a good thing, saying that they're happy with what we've funded them. Um, and then implementation of process for provider stability, improved understanding of budget implications associated with CCBHC, um, and the public health emergency. Um, you know that a lot of our, um, people that's enrolled will fall off at the end of this, um, fiscal year, and we are paid through our, through our, um, capitation per member per month, and we're, um, have to look closely at how that is affected with the public health emergency, with the number of people enrolled, and how that affect, um, going forward for the new fiscal year. And they advocate for additional funding and explore funding resources. So those are some of the, um, um, deficit reduction planning we did, as well as budget response plan, and so if there's any questions around or associated with any of those, we welcome to, we welcome you to ask at this time.
I just wanted to make an additional comment, is that a lot of times, what we're finding is that we're not paying based on managing our fund source. So the money's pulled in, and then at the end, it's sort of paid out based on, um, not quite sure right now, honestly. Um, but I do think that one of our budget deficit plan actions is to really look at how we apply different funding sources, so that we're knowing exactly what the formula is. If somebody is in a CCBHC as well as CMH, actually, CCBHC... If somebody is in a C C B H C as well as C M H, actually C C B H C should pay first. And then Medicaid is the payer of last resort. So, if you're not applying that on the front end and you're waiting to the end, then you could overuse one funding source and be left with access in another that can't be carried over. So, it puts you at a risk. So, if we can manage our fund sources better with our new software and things that are, um, coming to play into this and reviewing our F S Rs, and really, I hate to say this, but moving towards a more claims adjudication process like our health plans do, um, then we can have better controls over our costs and how we apply payments.
So, your, uh, deficit reduction plan makes some sense to, uh, you know, ignorant person might, like me. But what I want to know that any adjustment that you make, what impact will it have on the people that we serve? Will there be any impact on the services that they receive? Uh, or will there be, we will be looking at, uh, personnel reduction? Or what, how will it impact, uh, our people?
I, I think that our budget deficit response plan is going to work. I also think that it should not have any pact on the people we serve. Um, in fact, I think we've probably been overpaying for some of our services. So, if we're managing our fund sources, we can actually see where our funding is going and, and how it's being applied to what services. And the other thing I mentioned earlier, why I don't think it will have a huge pa- impact on people served and our employment is because we can put more controls in to make sure that if we can forecast better, um, we can make those right decisions. And so, the last, very last resort in terms of not even on the table is to reduce services, but is to manage care. And I think that's the thing that gets a bad rap sometimes, is really making sure that the services that are put in a person's plan are actually being provided at the rate and, and frequency that they should be provided. So, really making sure that what is promised to an individual, they're getting. I think the biggest impact on service delivery has been employment. So, a lot of folks have services in their plan that they can't receive because of lack of, uh, resources in the H R area.
I, I just have a follow-up. It's the simplistic and from my side of the aisle, which is a provider, that managed care basically works for preventive care. And most of our people have chronic issues. I mean, there is no cure for.
Mm-hmm.
Diabetes, for example, there, it can only be managed. Or the curve can be flattened a little bit, but it cannot be prevented. So, it is the same thing that applies to people, uh, in, in, in our constituency. So, you know, there, there are times when you have to do, like you yourself said, you have to do fee for service even when you have a contract with people. So, that, that is the worry, that is the anxiety that is going around and I'm hearing about it.
I, I, I would like to respond to that because I think, like I said, managed care gets a bad rap in that if you have a standardized assessment, you can determine level of care. And in doing that, a person's inner plan is developed and says what services and supports an individual needs. Even the individuals that we see that are chronically ill, we can apply that same process to. So, their service level may always stay the same or it may get better or may get worse. But you can apply what they need, it's like managed care one-on-one, the severity of illness is, equals intensity of services. So, when we begin to look at that, we can use utilization management process to make sure people aren't underserved or overserved, that they're getting the right amount of care to meet their needs. And I, I know that there's fear in that because I know, working as long as I have in this field, people sometimes don't put things in the plan because they say, "Well, that service is not available, so I'm not going to offer it." But that's not the right way to do when you have a standardized assessment. In many cases, if a service level is not available, you're supposed to bump it up. And that doesn't happen, I think, a lot because of staffing issues and the ability to provide, uh, service providers to provide, provide a particular service. So, one of the things that we looked at over the last year is looking at our S E D, um, waiver, families that are part of S E D waiver. And we know that some of the services could not be provided because there's a limited number of respite, there's a limited number of certain specialty services that prevent, that could prevent a child from needing to be hospitalized, right? So, what we did is we expanded our network to add five additional S E D providers. And so, getting those providers on board and getting them started, because we're hearing from providers that say, "Hey, we're at capacity. We have kids on the waiver that we cannot serve." Or we have kids coming to us who qualify for S E D services, not even the waiver services, but S E D services, that we don't have enough clinicians and providers to provide that service. So, we expand our network. And that's part of our contract with the state. If we don't have the capacity, we have to do, uh, a process where we invite new providers to come in to our area and provide those services.
Patrick? Kind of a follow-up question back to the liabilities comparison. The chart uses September thirtieth essentially year-end number to April thirtieth point in time. And this may be more of a follow-up question if you don't have it off the, the top or in your notes. Is that, is the point in time similar to where we would have been last year in terms of our payable, our liabilities and our, especially like our vendor payables?
Uh, yes, yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Just want to get kind of a framing magnitude.
Year-to-year comparison.
Okay, all right.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, there's no longer a fifteen or sixteen million in the negative that we can't pinpoint, right? It's been pinpointed as debt that we've paid off or paid towards.
You're referring to, uh, pre, uh, prior year, F Y twenty-two?
No, now, what we've been talking about recently about us not knowing that we're, I mean, we didn't even have like a for sure number of how much we're in debt.
Right, right now, our, um, actual revenue and our actual expenses, um, as of year to date shows two million.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I know I asked earlier, but you said that two million deficit, we don't know if it's going to go up and be more. We don't know if it's going to be less for the remaining six months of the financials. We don't know if it's going to stay the same.
Right.
We have absolutely no clue on whether we're in trouble, worse in, in more trouble than we are. Okay, um, and then you mentioned recent, just a few minutes ago, that, um, that we're dealing with the recertification. And if people don't end up getting certified to stay on, uh, Medicaid, then that's going to impact our revenue. But you said that they're, they're not going to get removed from the plan until next fiscal year. So, if the, the state's already announced how they're going to redo the certification or how, when people get tossed? Or do we, or have they not? Do we know?
It's a rolling calendar. So, say, for example, people in July are up for renewal for their Medicaid. Those are the individuals we will work with now to say, "Hey, you know, you're up to, you need to reapply for Medicaid."
Right.
So, when they don't reapply, if they reply, apply late, there's forty-five day window. So, this goes back to the original date. So, we're working with the community, working with the Oakland County Health Department, working with our, uh, stakeholders in the community to make sure that people have apply. The good thing about it, even though we want them to be on D A Bs, if that's what they really truly need, even if we can get them on T A N Fs, which is the temporary, it's better that we can work with them and continue to make sure that we identify things that ensure that they're eligible for those levels of coverage.
Okay, so, I'm not being sort of clear in my question.
Okay.
I understand that there's a process to do.
Mm-hmm.
And there may not even be retroactive, but I guess there's a forty-five day window, retroactive period. But let's say they apply or recertify, but they don't qualify.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're no longer going to qualify for Medicaid, so their, whether they're a D A B, T A N F.
That won't matter at that point.
It won't, won't matter if that's revenue we're going to lose. When, when do they cease to get it or when do we cease to get revenue for that person?
That, that will be effective the date that they're determined not to be eligible. And the other thing about it is if they're not eligible for Medicaid, there are other funding sources that we can look at. For example, we can look at the Healthy Michigan. We can also look at C C B H Cs, which are not, um, dependent on ability to pay. They're, they're really looked at as people who are uninsured. We can also use the C C B H Cs as an option for people who need services. Because if they don't qualify for Medicaid as a D A B or a T A N F, most likely they're in the mild to moderate category and they can go to a C C B H C and still receive those services.
Okay, so, I'm going to try this again.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's say they're up for recertification for July first, so they're going through the process right now.
Mm-hmm.
And they earn more than a hundred and thirty-three percent of the, of the.
Property.
Property level, so they don't qualify for Healthy Michigan either.
Mm-hmm.
Does, does that mean we're going to lose the revenue for that person?
Yes.
In the check at the end of July?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are going to have.
I don't know if it'll actually be effective in July, I would have to check that, but we will lose the revenue for that person.
And perhaps even this fiscal year?
Yes.
If it's not July, it might be in the August check.
Yes.
So, and we don't know how many people we're going to lose.
Nope.
Whether they attempt to certify or they forget to certify. But if they fail to, if they fail to stay on the rolls, if you will, we're going to have a financial hit for each and every person that's on Medicaid today that fails to stay on Medicaid.
I don't think, uh, we can truly project how hard it'll hit because here's the thing. A lot of people stayed on Medicaid who would have fell off the rolls anyway because they were kept on Medicaid during the pandemic, during the emergency, the, the, so, that's one thing. But then there are other programs and services that we can get paid for. It may not be the same amount, but there will be funding services and sources for that individual if they still meet criteria for services.
So, and when I look at it financially, we've been lucky to have had them on Medicaid for an extra couple of years if they didn't really qualify. But now it's going to stop.
Well, and then the other piece is.
How are we prepared for that, Mike?
Other states are asking for additional time because it's, it's creeping up on people. I've read the, I think last week, another state, I'm not sure which one it was, they're applying for extensions. Because I do think the state is having difficulty with notifying people. A lot of people we serve don't have an address. So, if you send somebody something in the mail and they don't get it, you know, that's why we have to be boots on the ground in the community, making sure people understand how to apply. And the other thing is training for the people who help people apply for their Medicaid. There's one form, if you do the one-page form, you get a.
Get D A B.
Yeah, a T A N F.
A T A N F, sorry.
If you do the full report.
You do D A B.
Yeah, you're more likely to get D A B.
Okay.
Because you're providing all that detailed information about what your disability is.
So, somewhere in the organization that I am employed, they are already looking at numbers and anticipating on their Medicaid because they're in a M C O, I'm not, but they are. And they're already anticipating a reduction in their Medicaid rolls.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're, they're, I probably could ask them what they're estimating, but I think it's highly confidential. Um, but there are a number of groups that are anticipating a reduction in the number of people that are going to be each month going out. And there's got to be a way that we might want to bake those kind of, something in there. And maybe we're wrong, maybe there's more people that come off it, or maybe we're wrong and there's less people that are coming off Medicaid over the next twelve months, each month, from July through next year, June. So, I think that we need to try to make some guesses, even if they're really wrong, just to say, "Well, we planned for, and planned for it, but worst-case scenario, it didn't happen," or best scenario, didn't happen. So, I'm just concerned.
We currently look at, um, the number of people that are coming due for redetermination and we send those reports and those lists to our providers so that they can follow up with individuals who need to reapply.
Okay, because, yes, Molina, Meridian, and Blue Cross and a bunch of others are already going through that process too. Okay, um, another question, and it's my last one, at least for now. Um, you mentioned before that we're, uh, we're looking at more controls being, uh, that we're going to implement to better manage our providers.
Mm-hmm.
When are we going to do those more controls that better manage those providers?
We're looking at, one, low hanging fruit now, what we can do now to look at those F S Rs more frequently. The other thing that we're looking at going forward, we would have to change some things in our contract, but we're looking at developing and having a claims process, a separate claims department that would really validate and verify that the services that are promised and contracted through the person's I P O S are being provided and that's what we pay for.
So, future, it's, in the future, but not, we can't implement it now because of contractual relationship. When are the contracts due? Or when are they expiring? I've heard we're renegotiating some.
We're, we're renewing contracts ongoing, so I, I don't see, oh, there she is. So, in terms of that timetable, I'm not sure what that is, but, thank you.
And one, so, are you guys actively renegotiating those Ts and Cs now? And that's Kalana Ali, our C L, uh, chief legal officer. Not yet.
Regarding the question about contract, uh, red, renegotiations, um, we currently do, uh, renegotiate on an annual basis. It is a rolling, we try to get everything started around the year, uh, month of July, August, um, to start those negotiations. However, over the last two years, we have taken substantial steps to make sure that we have pretty much come to the table with our provider network individually or collectively as groups to negotiate the terms so that there shouldn't be many changes in the legal terms of the agreement. As it relates to any programmatic changes, though, do, those can and may change based on operational needs and requirements. And so, that can be dictated, again, by O C H N operations and/or, um, M D H H S and the Medicaid Provider Manual requirements.
And this sounds like this is a, I wouldn't really call it a major shift. It's a major, um, coming back to what we were doing prior to COVID, um, where we had a process to better manage our provider network. So, it sounds like we've got some terms and conditions that we're going to have to implement that they may or may not want to see. So, have you had any challenges with them in terms of pushback on these new terms and conditions for better management of these providers?
Um, as it relates to those types of changes, we have actively, and we have traditionally or historically actively engaged the providers. So, there aren't any unilateral changes without at least talking to the providers to engage them, to under, help them understand, I E., or more specifically, O C H N's process going forward. So, as it relates to what Ms. Lastnemie spoke about regarding, um, any funding requests or provider stability payments, um, that change was communicated not only via policy, but also via contract amendment. And, um, providers were met with where appropriate, where that, um, change occurs, to inform them of that change. So, um, O C H N regularly engages with the provider network to inform them of any changes and allow for meaningful feedback. And as my experience has been, we have sat across the table to negotiate those terms with them as needed.
Yep, sounds like we're going to negotiate with them as needed. I was just wondering if we're getting any pushback from them as we're implementing tougher terms and conditions, that's all.
Did I, did I answer your question or no?
Not really, but that's, I'll see if we actually are able to implement these tougher terms and conditions. I guess another way of asking, has anybody refused to sign a new contract because we have?
Every, everyone who we pay right now is under contract with O C H N, which means they have an executed agreement on file with us.
Okay, so, so, I think that, what you, I, I think to just interpret it, there is a bilateral discussion. And whether they're happy or not is irrelevant, they're signing the contract.
We come to terms and have an agreement.
Right, okay. You, you hadn't passed your, your, uh, your limit yet, so you're okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for Patrick, uh, Pastor?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Paul, I, I wasn't sure whose hand was up there.
John Paul can go.
Okay, go ahead, John Paul.
Thank, thank you, um, so, I was able to listen to the discussion in my car coming in, so, um, so, I am abreast of some of the numbers, uh, and some of the questions, and some, some of it went in. and some of the questions, and some of it went in and out. But, so the $2 million projected deficit for fiscal year '23. Now, does that include the $13 million that we're requesting from the Board of Commissioners?
No.
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 It does not. We have not had an increase from the Board of Commissioners since 1999. So this is sorta like a cost of living increase in terms of looking at it, in terms of how much our budget has increased overall and having something that aligns with that increase in our budget and number of people served.
Okay, yep, because I see that we're going, but that does not include-
No.
Okay, all right. And then the $10 million for the fiscal year 2022, I was coming in right as the question was being asked by Christina. So is that still a project, that $10 million? And with that, the also 5.9 million in payments that we were made aware of before as well?
Yes, correct.
So that still exists?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's cost settled, and it's already a part of the financial statements that's presented now. So whatever occurred in '22 is settled, and this is where we stand as of year-to-date, $2 million.
So the $2 million, so when we get to that $2 million deficit, that includes?
$10.1 activity through April 30th.
Okay.
Because we're all kinda struggling with the same question here. And I'm sure the studio audience sees it more. So at the end, September 30th of '22, we were how much underwater?
September 30th of '22. And we'll have our final last-
No, no, I know, but just give me a ballpark number.
$10 million.
$10 million. Okay, so that ends there.
But that doesn't include the 5.9 in payments, does it?
When you say the 5.9-
Yeah, there was a number, I'm looking at my notes from the March 16th meeting.
That was the CCBHC cost settlement. Because originally, when we presented this to you, it was $16. But it reduced our FY '22 budget deficit to $10 million, which has been settled through our final FSR submitted to the state. So all of that is cost settled, and that $10 million is our actual final number. And it'll be all presented in our audit next week.
Okay, and then, so when we get to, so that $10 million, so then when we get to the, the next fiscal year, with everything taken into consideration, we're at the $2 million deficit, correct?
As of year-to-date, yes.
As of year-to-date? Okay, okay, as of year-to-date, so that could change.
April 20th, 2023.
So that could change, but that does not include any increase from the Board of Commissioners? If we're able to get that, okay.
Everything that's included in that is what's actually received and what's actually paid out.
Okay, and another question. So, I know the, one of the changes that we're looking at is quarterly financial statements, correct? Reviews of the financial statements, I believe was said?
We're reviewing them quarterly, yes.
Right, instead of annually, correct?
That's correct. The final is done annually, but we're doing quarterly. Look back and make payments based on the actual, so that there's no variance, large variance at the year-end.
Okay, and then, and then I had in my notes from before, one of the points was, there was some software issue. Is that, was that still something? That was, was there a discrepancy or an issue with software?
Software really doesn't have any effect on the finances. But, yeah, we did have a software where we were working to get our budget to actual reports through a module within our Business Central software. So we're one module short of completing our full implementation.
So that, because I'm thinking back, so I remember a year ago, we changed our, our time, our pay time off type software, our attendance software, whatever it was you would call it. And then there was some discrepancies and issues. And so, you know, it caused an issue with time that we had to pay back to people. And I know that that was explained then as a software issue. So I'm kind of taking what happened in that scenario and applying it to this. So, but, so there were no software issues that caused any of the financial discrepancies or issues?
I mean, we could plan better if we had that piece in place because it gives us a real-time budget to actual reports. Now, a lot of it is done, was done manually, so to speak. So more so than just having a software where we could just run the report within our Business Central.
Okay, so then year-to-date, $2 million projected deficit is where we're at?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I now can ask a question?
Pastor.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to this discussion. Three things, and I wanna look projections. We're $2 million, projecting $2 million now through April.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, all right, through April. Do you have an idea of what that projection will be by September 30th? And the reason I'm asking, if we go back to the numbers we've talked about, we were $8 million at the end of 2022. Then the number that I heard at the last meeting was, you know, $6 million or something projected. Throwing out this number, $10 million. Now we're saying it's $2 million through April. What projection do we have for how this year will, will end? That's, that's number one.
Well, I can tell you this. I feel better presenting this $2 million this month versus what our deficit was at the end of March last month. And so, it's refreshing to know that we're $2 million deficit because we're budgeted for $8. So right now, we're less than what we're-
What we were projecting.
What we were projecting, yes. So it could shift, you know, from month to month based on the timing of payments because we're doing it based off actual revenue received and expenses incurred. So we're trying to give you as more accurate information as possible so that you can be informed on how our financial outlook really is.
So with that, and with the, Jared mentioned, the idea of the impact of the COVID numbers, the impact of the COVID numbers, what was going on at that time, with the fact that we're past COVID, okay? And whatever numbers we were getting in at that time, I'm wondering about the projection forward. Do we have something that says, prior to COVID, we were at this, this is what happened in COVID? What is the impact going to be? Is it a 10%, 20%, 30% differential that you will have? As it relates to trying to manage this deficit? You know, the laws of Medicare, which we've talked about here. But I guess I'm trying to look at getting our arms around this a little better, even with some minimal projections so that we're not saying, okay, let's see what happens this month versus what's gonna happen next month. And I don't know if you have some data with that?
We have to take that back and-
Or if there's something that you can bring forward?
We have to do some comparatives to-
I'm sorry.
Be able to answer that question. We'd have to do some comparatives to really give you a real good answer for that.
Can I add too? One of the things I think Patrick said originally is that we took out accruals that we had not received yet. So that gives you a real-time picture. So instead of counting money that we have not received yet, you get a more realistic number. The other thing I'll say about the Medicaid redetermination, some of the advocacy we have to do is to look at rates. Medicaid rates are very low. So if we are seeing a decrease in the Medicaid enrollees, we have to advocate for higher rates. The other thing I'll say is that some things are low-hanging fruit that we're trying to do now, and other things won't have a real impact until after the new fiscal year. So I think if we're looking at this more realistically, one, don't count money we don't have, right? Two, making sure we have a community-based effort to make sure that people get the right redetermination process so that they can get the full Medicaid, which is, like I said, almost a $200 difference each month. And then the other thing is really looking at services that are in a person's plan and ensuring and verifying that they're actually receiving those services and we're paying for those services. The other impact I think we've had this year that really caused some shakiness in our budget and revenues is CCBHCs, the certified community-based health clinics are new. And so the rate right now is $4, $400, I'm sorry, up to $400 per day for a service. And so as they adjust that, there's gonna be some changes with that for, especially for individuals who are not qualified for Medicaid. And if they're coming to the CCBHC, I hope you hear the nasally part, sorry about that. But if they're coming to a CCBHC, it goes back to that managed care component, is that everybody who's enrolled in a CCBHC is not equal. So you have individuals who are mild to moderate, like any one of us who may need outpatient therapy services, right? Or they're stabilized, and they've been stabilized for a while. And then you have other people, like Dr. Heinz talked about, who are critically ill and chronically ill who need lifelong services and supports. So their amount of services don't fluctuate as much as somebody who's a mild to moderate, who has a mild to moderate condition. They could come to therapy six, eight weeks, even a year, and at that point, they're done. They don't want any more services. They'll call you when they need you, right? So those are the kinda things that play on our budget and our revenues as we select them, and can have impact. So I think we're trying to be more realistic in terms of what we're looking at and what we're reporting, and then also following up with data. Data is very critical. So if we're only looking at a FSR, it doesn't tell the whole story. So we wanna make sure we have a way to tie our processes together so that we have the most accurate picture and we are paying out what we should be paying out.
And I think I agree with you on that. I guess maybe even projections, you know, how are we gonna fall in between this? As an example, if we project 10% less, okay? That's better than not projecting, okay? Because we're working on the actuals, because the actuals are behind, that's not forward. And so the idea of the planning and what have you becomes more effective if, in fact, we can do some expectations and some projections. You know, even with the new systems you're saying, with that, what is the projection? That those dollars that would come in from that are support that we need? So it would be good, it would be good if we can look and say, this is a projection that we think's gonna happen, even if we fall short, how far were we from that? And I agree with you, data's gonna help us. You know, I believe if you can't, if you can't measure it, you didn't do it. So, so the idea is that if we can get some projections, I think that would help us better in planning and understanding which direction we're going, along with the impact of this Medicaid thing, which I think is gonna be scary for a while. Thank you.
Patrick, thank you for putting up with all the questions and clarifying. I think what was confusing was there's a year-end number with a long audit trail, which is very long, but that's the world we live in. And then there's a new number, and the new number is actually positive compared to where we thought we could be, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so let's save that point for a minute. I'm sitting next to Pastor Jones, I gotta be positive here. So a couple of things that I think we need to do. Dana's right, there are other, every state's going through this. And this is historic. Nobody's alive from 1923, I think. Maybe a few people born in '23, but nobody working. So I think what other states are doing is lobbying to extend. Because living in this world with my youngest, we've done a great job of getting general information out there. Providers are doing a decent job of getting specific. But I have no clue when Joseph Young is gonna go through this. Zero clue, because you can't find it on my bridges. That column is blank. So I think we've gotta lobby the state to say, you know, even people who know what to look for, much less if you move, or if you've changed, or if you, you know, the other expectation is everybody has their own cell phone. Well, if you're a non-verbal autistic, what do you need a cell phone for? So I think our lobbyists and our government folk, we gotta push to extend this out because it's, nobody's ever done this before. And then a question probably for the future is, I appreciate that we've gone to the actuals. I think that cleans up a lot of what we were uncertain about. So I appreciate that. But maybe some order of magnitude, what were the accruals typically?
The majority of the accruals were CCBHC.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we, yeah. Majority was CCBHC.
Yes, John Paul.
Thank you. You mentioned we projec, or that we budgeted for an $8 million deficit? What does that mean? Because that's news to me.
Well, that's the budget that we approved and was presented at the Budget Amendment 2 in March.
So, oh, before, this was, but, before, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, but we budgeted for the eight, but this was, this was before or after this all came to light?
Well, this was before all this came to light.
So we had projected for the eight? Because I remember coming to the meeting in March, and we, when we were first discussing all of this and that there were these budgetary issues that we weren't sure quite to what extent they were. And that was at the time when I had asked about a fund balance. And it was told somewhere in the neighborhood of $32 million, and it's not that. But, okay, so that $8 million deficit is what you're saying in that budget amendment?
Right, that's correct.
And then what about our fund balance? What is that number?
Currently, um... It's, uh... Our net position is $58 million. Fund balance.
Yeah, the reserve.
It's, uh, 40-
Is it?
Unrestricted as of April, as of April's financials is $21,758,000.
Okay.
And the SUD fund balance is $19,440,000.
Okay. Okay, and then the, the $10 million that we had talked about before, so then, and maybe I missed that earlier because it was cutting in and out a little bit. So we squared up the payment situation. And so how did we do that? Did we go back and dispute some of the, some of the costs?
Mostly, the $10 million, it landed at that because we had a CCBHC settlement of $5 million. And that's reduced our FY '22 deficit from 16 to roughly 10.
Okay, and then so we, so what we were saying then, the projected deficit of $2 million, correct, at this point?
Yes, with all things being equal, our previous year cost settlements complete, there's nothing, no deficit carrying. This is what has occurred from October 1st activity through April 30th, $2 million.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just after, first of all, thank you for answering all the questions and being straightforward with it. I think this gives a better sense of where we're at. And I do, though, understand, and I hope the board does too, the difficulty, we're gonna have to make projections for two reasons. One, we need to know where we're gonna end up. Second, we've gotta get ready for the- Second, we've got to get ready for the budget next year. So we have to, we have to make, I think, those hard choices, as Jonathan has pointed out, of where we might be at. The bigger picture is that through April 30th, Medicaid is 72% of the operating budget, and we don't know, because of the redetermination process, exactly how much of that money's going to be coming in. So I understand the difficulty. I don't know where we might be able, I'll leave it to your resources because you and others in the executive team of coming up with some kind of formula, I think it will be less, I think everybody knows that, the question is how much less. And then, as Dana's mentioned, then there might be other sources, we might be able to supplement that deficiency. So I can see where it's getting difficult to make that projection, but we're going to have to do some type of projection as we move forward. So, but I'm glad that we have a plan, it's being implemented, and we're being proactive about it. We're not sitting here waiting for the, you know, lack of a better term, guillotine to drop. And I think if our lobbyists can start to get some information of what the state might do, as John's pointed out, you know, we're all oars, all the oars are in the water on this, so it is unprecedented. I guess if, for those who are listening, if you can imagine, you're trying to figure out your household budget for the next three months, and you might have, you will have a drop in revenue, but you don't know how much it's going to be, but you're still working as hard and providing all the services. That's kind of where we're at right now. And we can pound the table and say it's unfair, but we're all in this together with all the other networks. So I believe the state will come to some resolution, but we don't know what that's going to be either. So we're in a little bit of uncharted territory. Before I described, we had some turbulence, now, and now the radar's not working. So no, I'm only kidding. Our radar's working, somebody else's isn't. The, so anyways, but if there's no other questions, we're going to let you go.
All right, thank you.
And thank you very much, keep up the good work and keep us posted and informed. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that being said, we're done with the finance committee portion, and we'll, yes?
I wondered if we'd be out of order to make a shuffle in the agenda, because we have a closed session that's later down in other business, but representative from there is here. Could I make a motion to move that up, move us to another room for, well, then we'd have to go in there?
How long is it, do we have an idea of how long that's going to take? Because we have to ask other people to stay longer.
Good morning, everyone, or good evening, everyone, Denard Haggins, Corporate Counsel. The closed session should take approximately 30 to 45 minutes, depending on the nature of the questions that are asked from the board.
Do we know how long the policy management section was going to last? Does anybody have an idea of that? We had... Then I, then I won't make the, I won't ask, make the motion? All right, let's go, let's at least get through policy management, and then we can, we can move that up to the other business first, okay? Is that all right? Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so next, on the policy management side, Malchaya is the chair of, no. You are, yeah, she had to depart, so Yvette, I'm going to pass the baton over to you for our semi-annual plan report from Frances Carley and move forward.
Hello, Ms. Carley.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to go over the FY '23 mid-year report. This report is a summary of the drafts that we discussed in depth during the most recent study session. So this is more of an overview with a few highlights, and it contains both the strategic plan for FY '23 and '25. It contains those updates as well as the FY '23 annual plan updates, because they coincide at this point in time. So we have the FY '23, '25 strategic focus areas. Again, these are staffing and retention, quality system of care, administration and service delivery, integrated healthcare, and partnerships advocacy and outreach. And the staffing and retention priority, this one addresses worker shortages, identifies opportunities to retain current staff, particularly the direct care workers, direct support professionals, and it also includes objectives to promote OCHN's diversity, equity, and inclusion values as well. So a few highlights, there are nine objectives total, a few highlights here. In FY '23 so far, OCHN continues to monitor the status of the pilot program for the direct support professionals, and a presentation, I believe, is pending for that. And also the results of the $16 wage increase across the board. During the first half of the year, OCHN was awarded a Great Place to Work certification, and this was determined through a third-party survey of all of the employees. Additionally, the SUD team was able to provide a stipend to providers for employee training and certification costs. And then finally, OCHN, for the diversity, equity, and inclusion priorities, is providing training through DACHBO and also the Courageous Conversation Series, which continues into this year. So we move on to the quality system of care priority. We have the four goals listed here, there are 24 objectives. This priority promotes a high-quality comprehensive system of care for all populations. This includes the crisis, non-crisis services, access, and children's services to meet the choices and needs of people served. So a few highlights, OCHN is prioritizing the expansion of the provider network. To date, two new SRS and CLS providers have been added, as well as four new SED providers. They are currently being onboarded. OCHN is also working to expand the access hours of operations so that people seeking services can connect with somebody in person after hours and on weekends. For crisis services, the Co-Responders Program has expanded to six communities and has provided resources and referrals to people who encountered law enforcement, nearly 800 people from the time of the report. And additionally, OCHN is creating a threat assessment team, which Dr. Poseo will discuss further after this presentation. So moving on to the administration and service delivery goals, this priority focuses on business strategies, including that improve the efficiency and delivery of services, including operations, data, information, technology, finance, and other areas. For these areas, a couple of highlights include reviewing the payment models to find the best approach for achieving value-based care. And additionally, the IT team is developing and testing a new provider credentialing and management module. This will streamline the process and support the sustainability of the provider network. And then finally, the finance team has launched, in the first period, the Business Central Platform, and this is to help streamline the financial management of the network. For integrated healthcare goals, this priority reflects OCHN's response to serving and addressing the needs of the whole person. There are five goals here with 13 objectives, and a few of the key highlights, next slide, please, include the status of the health homes. OCHN continues to be a leader for the behavioral health home throughout the state, and as of the report, more than 1,000 people have been enrolled. The opioid health home has enrolled 116 individuals year-to-date. As mentioned, the CCBHC demonstration continues to be an evolving model, and OCHN is continuing data collection, financial reporting, to establish ways to monitor and manage the program going forward. And another significant component of OCHN's role as a PIHP is the data collection monitoring, which helps in care coordination and managing care throughout the network. As part of that, OCHN is developing dashboards to monitor the crisis post-stabilization services and also launching a new population health software tool that will also include a screening tool for the social determinants of health, and that is pending launch in August. And then finally, we have the partnerships advocacy and outreach goals priority. This covers the advocacy and involvement of people receiving services, OCHN's partnerships in the community, and supporting the rights and service and support needs of people served. So during the first half of the year, OCHN hosted a legislative breakfast to introduce the newly elected officials in Oakland County to OCHN's services and role and educate them on the local CMH system. Additionally, our CEO Dana Lassenby and Chief Clinical Officer Kim Flowers delivered testimony to the Senate Health Policy Committee earlier this year to advocate for the public system, and then also to introduce OCHN's work. So the focus was on the YFCC, and as part of that, OCHN has provided a number of tours for legislators and representatives in the area for, by providing tours of the YFCC to them. Additionally, OCHN continues to participate in at least four community events a month. And finally, another highlight is that the OCHN team has recruited individuals from Gen Z to create a work group and provide service and outreach recommendations for peers in that generation. So then, in closing, most of the progress, most of the objectives and goals are in progress. Several objectives are already complete. The chiefs are working with the directors to identify any potential barriers and to work through those before the close of the fiscal year. And we're reviewing the status of all the objectives as we are in the middle of the development, of developing the FY '24 annual plan. So we're reviewing that status as we move forward. If I can take any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Torres?
Could you go back to the slide, you said, mentioned something about branding, about the OCHN? I think you had touched on it, yep.
Well, the, one of the main goals for the FY '23 plan is having a branding campaign for OCHN's leadership role in behavioral health.
Okay, and so what are some of the, I know we really got our name out there the past few years, you know, putting up billboards and buses and things like that. So we definitely see the OCHN around more. But I guess what are some of the plans of the branding? Because we get so much, like, if I tell somebody I'm on the Oakland County Health Network Board, they just kind of look at me like, what is that, you know? And I think, you know, years ago, when I was on the board, it was community mental health, and that's changed. And it seemed like people were like, oh, yeah, I know what that is. But I guess what is the, what is the idea?
So obviously, Suzanne Weiner with Communications Team. We're continuing our branding efforts and expanding those. We're actually doing a little bit of a refresh, continuing to keep our image and our look and feel and color scheme, but just, you need to do a little refresh every once in a while. So doing kind of a little refresh, gradually rolling out that refresh. But we continue with the implementation of a lot of our different programs. Our school mental health navigators are out there and talking about OCHN at a number of different events. I talk about those at my community updates. We are now also going into, so doing some of that grassroots type of stuff too with our school mental health navigators. We're also working with our farmers' markets and getting that message out there, our local libraries, our faith-based programs and faith-based initiatives, and working with our partners. Dr. Poseo has just presented at a faith-based program. So doing a lot of those grassroots efforts, but also looking at some of those advertising options in terms of what we continue to do with Comcast, billboards, bus ads, now looking at radio. We actually did implement something recently with radio for our veterans event, and looking at that for our suicide prevention efforts coming up in September, and also with our SUD programming. So just continuing to look at other options to continue to get the information out there.
So we're doing a lot of what we were doing before, continuing it, but then kind of more, some more grassroots stuff, like you were saying.
Yes.
You know, doing more of that collaboration, farmers' markets, community events. I know we do those, but, so building up more of that then?
And even with our advocacy efforts, trying to get the message out there with our, we talked about that earlier, especially with the PHE ending, and our advocacy efforts and doing, trying to get the message out there with our advocates, as well as with our direct support professionals, trying to work with our advocates to get that messaging out there. So it's a combination of looking at different avenues to get the word out about us. And I think it's actually succeeding, we're doing a lot of new events or participating. There are so many more events that are happening throughout the community, and we make sure we're at them whenever we hear about them, we make sure that we're at them. So it's getting the word out, both at a higher level with our advertising efforts, the paid advertising efforts, but also being present in the community and talking about us and letting people know that we're available to them.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add to that, if I can. Part of that campaign is also what you see as evidence of us having more partnerships with Oakland County Health Department, Honor, and those type of partnerships. The more people know what our role is in managing the network of providers, opportunities have come our way, such as doing the integrated urgent care with the county health department. So those are just a few examples. When I started working here, there was little known about what we actually do. Like you said, it's more of, we're the centralized administrator of those provider networks, and so making sure that people understand what our role is, not maybe to provide direct services, but to make sure that the services are available and we have the capacity to serve individuals, and how to reach us when needed.
I'd like to add to that as well, and I have number three on there, it's just build strategic partnerships. And on the June 28th, June 28th, here in this building, would be the Call to Solidarity. It's countywide, we're pulling together every, I'd like to say every, okay? But every health organization, grassroots organization, every Billy Bob, Mary Jo, and Joe Fabich that's doing anything with health, with mental health, with homelessness and what have you, to say, here's where OCHN is. And the exciting part is that it's here, the county executive will be here, talking about it. And it really helps us to further identify our role and what we're doing, you know, to that. And so it is our hope that out of that, people will understand exactly where we fit in. So we're pulling together a lot of different groups and organizations to eliminate, if you will, not eliminate, let's say alleviate duplication, but also show where our strengths lie. So I think it's going to be a great, great push for us, help us in our branding, help us in people understanding exactly where we fit in as OCHN. Thank you.
I think, you know, the communications is such a huge piece in any organization, because, I mean, just look at the day and age we are in and... because, I mean, just look at the day and age we are in, an information age. Everything is driven by, you know, 10-second bits, five-second bits. And people want to know what we are and who we are and what can we do for them within those seconds. And you know, kind of like what Dana was saying, is that it opens up, you know, collaborations and opportunities with others. And I think it's always best, you know, for, and even when we go to ask for, you know, additional funding to the Board of Commissioners, that they understand who we are and what, you know, as much as we, you know, meet and convey, but just so that people can understand. But I think, you know, our branding and our communications is, you know, in my opinion, as somebody who is above a millennial, I think they call me a zillennial, but because I'm a Generation X, but kind of a millennial. But, you know, in my age group, I came up with that information age, and you see how it has just taken off. And I think it's just everything when it comes to an organization and what people perceive, and then the resources that you're going to get from it. So it just was very interesting to me on the branding piece and that, so, but it sounds like, you know, the plan is moving forward with a lot of what we're doing, but more of the grassroots stuff as well.
Just to piggyback off of that and just make sure to mention, we have a very robust social media presence.
Yeah.
And that's a big part of that branding and a little bit of that refresh of what we're doing right now is, I mean, we're on the most of the social, most of the viable, I guess, are important social media channels, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Pinterest. So LinkedIn, that is a big part of our push. And that, piggybacking off the partnership piece of it, is we're always trying to share what's going on in the community with all of our community partners and encouraging them to do the same thing. Obviously, you know, you get a lot of messaging from us through the Constant Contact, if you're part of that list serve, that's a lot of, a big piece of our push and messaging as well. So, you know, just trying to look at different avenues, and we're always open to suggestions for continuing to get the message out about who we are.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one. Related to the opioid health home level of care, 116 people seem kind of low with, you know, the opiate epidemic that we have in our community. Is that what you guys had projected? Are we above, below, or on target?
I can respond to that. So the program, that particular health home just launched in, on October 1st.
Okay.
So the first half of the year, so this is recruitment for six months. And they continue to recruit people. I can ask Megan for more information about the recruitment efforts and the number of participants and, you know, if there are plans for expansion and things like that. But this was for the initial launch. Those are the numbers?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening all. Megan Phillips here, Director of SUD Services. In terms of our opioid health home numbers, currently the health home is a pilot program. So we have three med providers and two outpatient providers that are participating in the opioid health home. So we expect after we work through more time, as we get to the year mark, we will look at expanding the home number across our provider network.
Thank you.
Hey Megan, by any chance, can you tell us how many folks you guys serve on the, let's see, on the substance use side?
For all of SUD Services?
Yeah, just, just a round number.
I will have to double check the numbers and pull it, I want to say currently enrolled right now, we may have around 2,100.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Carley.
Thank you so much.
Well, Trish is going to tag team on this with me, if that's okay. And I promise I will be as quick as possible. So Ms. Carley did mention earlier that we are working to build a threat assessment program here at OCHN. And so what is threat assessment? You probably have heard the term, you know, kind of bandied about, especially after the Oxford shooting. But threat assessment essentially is a evidence-based, multidisciplinary, systematic approach to identify, assess, and manage potential acts of violence or other dangerous situations. And so when I say multidisciplinary, certainly behavioral health is at the heart of it, but it is a fundamentally a collaboration between behavioral health, law enforcement, schools, teachers, principals, et cetera, student resource, school resource officers rather, and various other entities in schools, workplaces, and the community as a whole. And again, the goal of threat assessment is to try to get people who might be on the pathway to targeted violence off of that pathway, and if necessary, into mental health treatment, if that is indicated. Of course, we are very mindful of the fact that people with mental illnesses are not inherently violent generally, and we are sure to inform the public of that whenever we can. But unfortunately, there are circumstances where people do get into situations, especially children, who do need a little bit of help. And we really want to provide an off-ramp from the criminal justice system into the mental health system, again, if that's indicated. So I like acronyms. I won't take credit for this one though, because that is our clinical director, Adam Hamilton, and I want to give him due credit, but Behavioral Assessment Threat Management Program, Batman. Again, this is a community-based threat assessment program. To my knowledge, no other CMH or PIHP in the region is developing a similar program. And actually, no other CMH or PIHP in the state is currently developing a similar program. So we are on the frontier of, you know, acting in this, this, this interface between law and psychiatry and mental health. So again, the, the goal of this program is to support existing threat assessment teams that are in the county, whether they be schools, or workplaces, or in the community as a whole, help establish new threat assessment teams and help train them, make sure that individuals who are the subject of such activities are really getting the help that they need, whether it be behavioral health help or otherwise. We want to make sure that we are not contributing unnecessarily to kids, especially in schools, kids getting suspended or expelled from school because it's actually counterintuitive to maintaining safety, because once you expel a kid from school, you don't have contact with that kid any longer. And so we want to make sure that programs that are engaging these activities are adhering to best practices related to threat assessment. And then ultimately, again, we want to make sure that we have proper context and are taking disability into account, again, making sure that people that might benefit from behavioral health services get them. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background, so I, myself, oh sure, sorry. So I am a psychiatrist, obviously, but I trained specifically in forensic psychiatry. And when I took this job two years ago, over two years ago, which I can't believe it's been over two years, time really flies, I really wanted to bring that sensibility here. And I, one of the reasons why I took this job is because we have such a robust justice initiatives team here. But one of the areas in which I kind of foresaw potentially needing some growth was in this realm of threat assessment. And that certainly hit home after the Oxford tragedy, certainly. And so that kind of kicked those efforts into high gear. And so beginning in late 2021, early 2022, we began to research different models across the country. I won't go into the different models, but wanted to make sure that we were drawing from best practices across the country. And then I utilized some of my contacts throughout the years to make sure that we were getting in touch with international experts to build the program here. And so with that, I will turn it over to Trish to continue giving a little bit of background of what we've been up to and what we're going to be up to.
Thank you, Dr. Pozio. Trisha Zumbow, Director of Training and Justice Initiatives. So I recently joined the justice team in September, October of last year. And with, in respect to the threat assessment, we've created a lot of partnerships and collaborations, both through Dr. Pozio's contacts and my own. We began discussions with Oakland Schools and working with them and their threat assessment team and their initiative that they have within the 27 school districts. We are also collaborating with the FBI and the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, where we continue to meet monthly with them to discuss cases. Their prosecutor's office had a gun violence commission, which on the next couple of slides, Dr. Pozio will go into as he sits on that commission and chairs one of the work groups, as well as partnering with Wayne State University and other local law enforcement as well. And I don't want to forget the Oakland County Emergency Management and Homeland Security as one of our threat assessment partners as well. Next slide.
So as Trish mentioned, to give just a little bit of an overview, in about 10 months ago, Prosecutor McDonald formed the Commission to Address Gun Violence in Oakland County. And certainly, threat assessment was a hot topic during that commission. And actually, one of the seven work groups that was formed was devoted to threat assessment activities. And I did chair the threat assessment work group, and essentially what we did was develop a set of recommendations to deliver to the prosecutor for inclusion in a final report that they'll be putting out sometime this summer. And one of the recommendations, next slide, please, was that the prosecutor's office would recommend that the formation of a community threat assessment team led by OCHN be supported. And other work group recommendations include the formation of a steering committee that would sit under the county executive's office, which would really help to encourage and support general threat assessment activities across the county. And that any activities with respect to threat assessment be evidence-based and adhere to the Secret Service's core components of their program. And then finally, because threat assessment has been such a hot button issue, and it's been mostly brought to the fore because of incidents in schools, that there be some special support of K through 12 threat assessment activities in the county. Next slide, please.
And Dr. Pozio, I'll also add too, with that work group, is we focused on four main sectors, one being community, which is the community threat assessment team, the K through 12, which Oakland Schools leads, higher education, so our colleges, our universities, and then also workplace threat assessment teams as well. We did begin training both our staff and our providers last summer. So we brought in Dr. Reed Malloy, who is, I guess you call like, basically like the founding father of threat assessment. And he was able to come in and do a training to about 25 of our staff over two days. We did partner and attend the Oakland Schools Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management, the BTAM trainings, beginning in the fall. And then we hosted the C-STAG training, which is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, which are the two main models that the majority of our K through 12 schools are utilizing here in this room in December. We have, myself also attended the BTAM Train the Trainer, so that we can continue to work with Oakland Schools to train more schools, districts, and school buildings, and helping them set up their teams as well. Coming up, we are working on some contracts where we can bring in Dave Okada, who is one of the co-authors of the Salem Kaiser, which is the third evidence-based model, and really is the only model that focuses on community threat assessment. So we'll be working with him to train our team and our partners as we start this initiative. We are also looking to partner with our FBI friends. We have been meeting with the Boston FBI office through our Detroit FBI partners on a threat assessment symposium that they also hold. We'll be bringing Dr. Reed Malloy back in March of next year to expand his trainings throughout our network and our community and our schools. And then we're working with Oakland Schools and our other local partners that were trained locally here, was Royal Oak, Oxford, Oakland Schools, and a couple other districts that I can't remember right now, so that we can host local trainings and continue to get more and more school teams trained. And the next slide. So moving forward, we are taking those steps to establish our community threat assessment team, to continue to collaborate and implement and launch that countywide steering committee with the county executive and the county homeland security. We are working on a pilot with Southfield Schools and how we can collaborate with them and offer them our support. We are participating and partnering on a research grant with Wayne State University, where we look at gaps and analyze our threat assessment activities here in our county. And then our FBI partners have approached us for ongoing training for their agents on mental health and threat assessment, on mental health, and then they can in turn train us on threat assessment and pathway to violence as well.
And one more collaboration is a pending participation in a research program from Michigan State University.
Yeah.
Which is actually centered on community threat assessment. So we are happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Dr. Hahn?
So thank you for this report. Yeah, so to me, in a nutshell, it appears two main components, law enforcement and K through 12. Now, in my reading, a few papers that I have read, that these start, these mental states start in adolescence. And from my perspective, schools or educators are not equipped. So in a nutshell, and I know that it's a comprehensive, very broad subject, but in a nutshell, could you explain what this looks like, the Batman program? What does it look like in a school?
So a lot of schools have or should have threat assessment teams established. And again, those are multidisciplinary teams that are usually comprised of like school counselors, school resource officers, the principal, and other ancillary staff at the school. But there's varying degrees of, I think, readiness. Uh, but there's varying degrees of, I think, um, uh, readiness, for lack of a better word, with respect to kind of activating those teams. Um, you know, some are very active and they kind of adhere to the best practices and, and evidence-based, you know, systems, uh, and some are, are kind of getting there still. And so depending on a school's need, uh, we would provide clinicians to help support the, the activities related to, uh, behavioral health assessments or management. So, uh, in other words, if they need assistance in terms of interviewing a subject of a, uh, a threat assessment, um, potentially, uh, an OCHN clinician could assist in that. Um, but what we, more often, I think, what'll happen is that they will be part of the team that is involved in actually managing the cases. And so management of the cases could mean, um, you know, ensuring that, uh, there's no weapons in the home, that, um, uh, somebody's staying in touch with the child frequently, like they're getting them into activities. Uh, again, if there is a mental health or behavioral health component, um, that they are getting the requisite services, uh, that would help to ameliorate that, that condition. Um, and so we're, we're looking to support existing teams, uh, and where teams don't exist at all, you know, really help to build those from the ground up and be more involved. So we want to start small. Um, so we, again, as, as Trish had mentioned, focusing on Southfield Schools, um, with one particular building, their high school, uh, as a pilot project, um, to help, you know, kind of work out, you know, what this might look like. Uh, and then based on that response, hopefully, uh, start to, uh, expand. Um, but with respect to the community as a whole, you know, certainly there are a lot of people that, you know, aren't, you know, in a K through 12 school, that aren't even, you know, that aren't in a college, aren't employed somewhere. And really, these are the folks that tend to fall through the cracks in terms of, um, not being on someone's radar screen, so to speak, with respect to possibly, uh, posing, uh, a threat of targeted violence. And that's where our relationship with the FBI and the sheriff's office, uh, and other local law enforcement is, is so, you know, critical because unfortunately, then they tend to end up on law enforcement's radar and then, you know, we want to make sure that we are intervening, uh, and, and diverting them from the criminal justice system, uh, if we can.
Yeah. My question was more towards K through 12. I'm thinking in terms of like the two hearing tests or vision tests, our movement based learning readiness test for young children. Is there any tools that the children can train or is there any way they can have?
Well, it's important to note that, uh, central to this whole process, i- i- it's not a, uh, we're, we're not looking at mental health symptoms per se in terms of threat assessment. We're more looking at potential, uh, behaviors that people are engaging in, that whether they have a, a mental health condition or not, indicate that they may be, uh, gradually progressing along the pathway to a targeted violence. Um, but aside from that, uh, sure, I agree with you that we can certainly, you know, could be doing, you know, it, it would be, uh, beneficial to have more mental health screening in K through 12 schools in general. Um, and, and I certainly, you know, would, uh, support that. But with respect to this, uh, i- again, it's more focused on assessing behaviors rather than mental health symptoms per se.
And, and Dr. Hahn, I'll add on to, the tool that the schools are using, um, are one of the three evidence-based tools. So the NTAC model is what Oakland Schools and Michigan, uh, Department of Education and Michigan State Police is promoting and training throughout the state. Um, the C-stag that I mentioned is another, um, model, um, that has a training for schools. Those are primarily the two tools that our schools are using. Um, and so the, the all-day training is for them, um, for their team on how to utilize that tool and how to go through the eight steps of creating that team, screening, and then providing a full threat assessment. So they get to practice that, um, those skills throughout, and then we discuss them as we go along.
Mr. Torres.
You're next, sir. Okay, I guess I'm next while you're getting that on. Uh, I'm wondering if, if you've considered, um, charter schools? And, and I lift that because, um, in Pontiac, as I look at the, um, Pontiac Academy of Excellence, Pontiac Art School, there have been a higher incidence of, of, um, activity, okay, threatening activity, what have you, at those schools. And I'm just wondering, maybe because they are a charter school, uh, maybe there's, there's a, an increase in turnover of the principals of teachers at that school, at those schools. And sometimes they're disconnected, even though the Oakland Intermediate School District has some responsibility for that. But I would suspect that, uh, charter schools there, charter schools whether in Southfield or wherever, are going through the same thing. And, and I'm just wondering, because they may have a, a lesser ability to, uh, hire proper authorities or what have you, that maybe doing a test there or including them in this study would be good, understanding that the trauma starts, you know, at a three-year-old. But here you're dealing with a, a lot of the, um, feeders, if you will, if I could use that word, uh, broken homes, single-parent homes, you know, uh, poverty and what have you. So I'm just wondering if that could be considered as you look at what you're going to do in Southfield? I don't know.
Oh, absolutely. And I think it's a fantastic idea.
Absolutely. And, and all schools have been invited to the trainings, either that we've hosted or that Oakland Schools has had. Oakland Schools also is offering, um, technical assistance for the schools as well. Yeah.
How mine works and yours don't.
There's a mic issue today.
So my question, um, are you guys familiar with Oakland County Youth Assistance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cause it sounds like they do the same thing already. It seems like we're kind of reinventing the wheel on the K through 12. Cause they have, uh, community committees, they have community boards in every school district in Oakland County, most I would say, I think all. Um, and they have a county-wide steering committee that does exactly what you guys are talking about. So I was thinking, maybe we should, uh, collaborate with them in some way because most, they're housed in the schools, they have one in Southfield. Southfield High School actually has a youth assistance worker, um, and they are part of the Oakland County, uh, court system. So they, they're actually Oakland County, uh, employees. Um, and, and so, but they have, um, they, you know, and they take on the, the students, you know, get referrals primarily from the school district, um, sometimes from the police, um, sometimes from community members, um, find them services. Most of the, the YA workers are licensed therapists, but I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, Youth Assistance was on the Prosecutor's Commission for Gun Violence and has been involved as well. Um, they're listed as one of the people who, um, would be on a school's threat assessment team. Um, and so they have been involved in, in the work and the presentation that, um, and the recommendations gone through the prosecutor. So, um, they, they do do a lot and we definitely partner with them and the schools partner with them. The threat assessment models are a little bit different, um, in, in, in regards to the, the pathway to violence, but we definitely partner with the youth assistance.
Yeah, cause I mean, just maybe there's some differences, but it sounds like very much the same thing, um, in that, uh, you know, finding the services. I, you know, the idea of the, uh, the workplace in the colleges, that's, that's interesting. You know, I haven't seen that, so that, that's, that's new to me. But when I think about youth assistance, you know, um, cause I'm aware of the, the prosecutor, they did the collaboration and everything, but, um, I'm just kind of thinking in my head, because I see it all the time, working in criminal justice and social work, that like, you know, sometimes we do, we have two or three different people doing the same thing and then everybody's fighting over the same person. And it's like, it's like, can we just collaborate, move it together and then streamline it? So, but I think, you know, any resources, obviously in this day and age is always great. Um, and the more and more services that we can provide, especially the K through 12 community is, is huge because I know with youth assistance in Watford, um, you know, we get everything from, uh, you know, a, a kid needs help to go to a sports camp, you know? Um, and then we, we will pay for it up to, uh, a school threat, you know? Um, and there are cases that oftentimes we get from the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office and then that diverted to us. And then that caseworker ans- answers to a board that is all community members, various different, you know, individuals, law enforcement, usually elected officials, our school board is part of that committee, um, and then just normal community members, uh, who serve on the board. Um, and then they have the overall county-wide steering committee, so, um, but yeah, if we collaborate them, just so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Well, yeah, we're, we're definitely not reinventing the wheel. Um, the, uh, the prosecutor's office brought in, you know, dozens of, uh, of experts in the community, uh, with the sole purpose of collaborating with each other so that, that we didn't do that very thing. We didn't reinvent the wheel and make sure that, um, that we are working together toward, toward the same goal. Um, so, uh, definitely appreciate, you know, your comment, uh, and, and want to make sure that, that what we're doing is filling a gap rather than, as you said, reinventing the wheel. And I think that, that we're on track to do that.
And I think that maybe from that, because of youth assistance, you know, that's a program, I think it works on educated kids or, you know, being educated, uh, but I do think maybe some of the input that they give, I think it's, I think it's a, like I said, it's collaborative, that, you know, partnership, sharing those ideas. I think with the area that you're working, uh, on that, it's going to be very, very important. I think, oh, thank you very much. Thank you. My text today. Uh, but I think it'd be very, very important, uh, with their input, but I think that the track that you're on is, is a little bit different in, in relation to looking at the threats. Because if, if, if I'm understanding correctly, one of the things that come out maybe is more openness and addressing the trauma, addressing the trauma that these young people have and it's happening in families that starts at an earlier age, that's very, very important. And all of the contributing factors that, that are going to that trauma, okay, to that trauma. The earlier we get a better feel on it, the better it is that we can handle it, so.
Any more questions? Uh, Dr. Giles?
Hello. So my question, I'm going to state the obvious, a very needed program, but as a practicing child and adolescent psychiatrist, I don't hear about the assessment team. What I get is, there was a threat, you need to clear this individual or they can't return to school.
Right.
Or I hear, we are going to allow this person to come back one hour each day and we need you to support this with your signature, um, so that we don't have to develop an IEP or so on and so forth. So I hear you talking about the community, K through 12 and things like that, but I'm wondering, are you partnering with the psychiatrist, so child and adolescent, K through 12, in the community, when we get these individuals in our office without an assessment report or anything, we just get, this is the threat, this is the behavior, um, clear them or they got to stay at home? So I'm wondering, like, where, where am I in your program?
Well, uh, I think that that's a complicated question. Um, I think part of this, uh, the rationale for developing this program was born out of part of what you described in terms of children were being taken to a crisis center and being, um, uh, you know, common grounds, uh, at the time, uh, now New Oakland, and being asked for them to evaluate the child and fill out a form that was essentially a stamp that, okay, they're good to go back to school, which is the antithesis of threat assessment, of, of the evidence-based threat assessment practice. Um, and so it requires collaboration between the schools and mental health professionals. Um, and so I think part of, again, part of what the Prosecutor's Office, uh, Commission on Gun Violence, um, was intended to do was to bring all these different stakeholders together and talk about what is the best way forward? How do we all get on the same page when we're dealing with, with, uh, these issues of threat to violence? Um, I think a tangible thing that we can do for a psychiatrist in the community, uh, is potentially, uh, invite them to one of the trainings, uh, with respect to threat assessment. Um, uh, but again, it, it, it requires adherence to this multidisciplinary, team-based approach rather than just, you know, dropping a child off somewhere and, and handing over a form that needs to be filled out.
And I'll add, um, to that is, um, we experienced the same thing with emails and calls from schools wanting to clear a kid. And so, um, really, part of this has been us educating the schools. And while we have a, a great partnership with Oakland Schools, we have 27 school districts with multiple administrations and multiple buildings, um, so really working together to educate them on the difference between a threat assessment versus a mental health assessment versus a suicide risk assessment and really educating them on, on that part as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Poseo and, and Dr. Trish Zumbow.
All right. So that concludes the policy management portion of our agenda. We're now on to other business and I believe there was going to be a motion to change the agenda to go into closed session under MCLA 15.268H, which is to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Yes, actually, I was going to make the motion to shuffle the order of the agenda.
Okay.
To make item D, which is that closed session first, and then also to go into, into, um, closed session to discuss that legal issue.
Okay. So first, we're going to change the agenda, then we have to have a vote to go into the closed session. So is there a support to change the agenda?
Supported.
Supported? Uh, is that a roll call or just a voice vote? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There being none, we'll change the agenda. Now we have to have a motion to go into the closed session for the purpose I stated earlier, and that is a roll call vote.
And I will make that motion.
Motion in support?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? There being none, the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. Landsman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. or Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Dr. Giles?
Yes.
And Ms. Root? A motion carries?
Okay. Where are we going? Uh, we're going across the hall.
Going across the hall.
Okay. So those who are in attendance can stay where they're at if they so choose. Um, I do want those who are here and those who are listening in to know that we will come back into open session after the closed session because we do have, uh, a presentation by our general counsel, uh, we have events and outreach, and then the Tri-County Metro Meeting June Study Session for, uh, the 29th. So at this time, I'm going to adjourn us from an open session to go into closed session.
Anyone interested in purchasing those items, they can kind, um, look at the CMHA website. So we're really proud to have that here, some great pieces, a lot of pieces have already sold as well. Um, another quick event I wanted to mention is we did the Alliance Shutter the Sigma 5K. A few of us from the communications team were a team at the Shutter the Sigma 5K. It was a great event, nice and warm day, um, and they always do a great job. It's a great fundraiser for the Alliance. I wanted to mention a couple of other things that we, um, have coming up or that have occurred. Uh- Uh, there was also the Encompass Conference that was last week. We also, this week, I mentioned this before, we're having our community baby shower. So basically, that's part of our women's specialty services with substance use disorders. And planning the, uh, baby shower, it's going to be on the fifteenth of June, so this Thursday. The fifteenth is a very busy day, as you can see. We've got a number of events going on that day. But we're very, um, pleased that Welcome Baptist Church was able to, is hosting that event for us. So we'll be in Pontiac, and, um, that'll be on Thursday. We also have a viewing of this, paying the tribute to the journey for Juneteenth. It's going to be, the viewing's going to be here at the Troy Building, and it's open to staff, as well as opened up, we opened it to the community. Uh, Adam is going to be, Adam J. is going to be presenting at our, this, the Elder Law Conference. It's coming up on the fifteenth as well. Um, and then we also have, one thing I wanted to mention is our Peer and Achievement Awards. Those are starting to come to a close. They'll be, uh, they're due on June the twenty-third. And we are accepting applications for anyone that you might want to recognize for their, their work throughout the year, as the achievements that they might have achieved, as well as any peers that want to be recognized. Those will be presented at our annual Your Voice, Your Value Conference, and that conference is scheduled for, um, August the seventeenth. So if you know of anyone that you would want to nominate, it's on our website to nominate individuals for any peer or achievement awards. Uh, and actually, Pastor Jones kind of stole my thunder with the Call the Solidarity. No, that's okay. I'm really pleased to be hosting the Call the Solidarity Conference or event coming up on the twenty-eighth. As he mentioned, it's going to be here in Detroit Building. So we're really excited about that event, as well as we are a partnership with Meridian. We are, um, be- a part of a documentary viewing. It's We Can Be Heroes, and this is part of, um, the Substance Use Disorders Program. It's a recovery type of documentary, and Dana will be part of a panel following the viewing of that documentary. That's going to be on the twenty-ninth of June, and it's going to be at the Crowfoot in Pontiac. Also, we are very pleased to announce that our own Bernard Hooper received the Michigan Chronicle Men of Excellence Award, and he will be honored, um, at a ceremony on June the thirtieth. And a couple of things coming up in July, I'll be mentioning those more again next month, but we have our Minority Mental Health Awareness Event coming up on July the twelfth, as well as we are, I mentioned, kind of, our farmers markets. We're spending some time at the farmers markets and educating individuals about OCHN. And we have, um, an event coming up on the twenty-second, kind of like a Family Market Day type of thing that we are participating in. But we're there often on the weekends and on Saturdays as well. Uh, another thing I wanted to note is, some questions came up about the PHE ending. I wanted to let you know we have continuous education about the PHE ending on our website, whenever we're out at events, which is quite often, as you can see from this lengthy list of events that we have going on. We have materials to educate people about, um, re-enrolling, re- and their eligibility. Um, and then we also, uh, will have that as a topic at our Your Voice, Your Value Conference coming up in August that I mentioned earlier. And we are, we continue to receive lists from the state, and as we receive those lists, we send letters out to people to not, give them another reminder, to let them know that they need to reapply for their eligibility. And as we mentioned, I mentioned earlier, we will continue to advocate. Uh, that's a big part of our efforts, to advocate and ensure that individuals know that they need to reapply for their eligibility. And just to mention a couple of press releases that we've either sent out or getting ready to send out. Traveling Arts Show Press Release went out. Um, we are going to be this week, uh, we also sent out the Great Places to Work Press Release, and we will be sending the press release out about men's health tips for dads. And we're also going to send a press release regarding Juneteenth this week as well. And we're working on the one about the APAF fellows. So those are some press releases that are going to be going out this month as well. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Suzanne. I don't see any hands up.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up on the item, uh, Agenda Item C is the Tri-County Metro Meeting and the June Study Session. Okay. So, we all know that typically our, for Thursday of the month is study session. That would be next week, Thursday. We also know that with our audit coming up, that would, it's really important that we get that briefing from the, I'm sorry, it's not next week, Thursday would be in two weeks from, from...
From Thursday.
From Thursday, okay. So, two weeks from now. Uh, and with the, with the audit report coming, it's really important to get that briefing. However, at the same time, we also have a Tri-County Metro Meeting, uh, that's in a few weeks. It's on the same Thursday. Um, and we're not hosting at Detroit, Wayne is. And I don't know at this point, are they in person or are they...
It's virtual.
It's virtual, okay. Um, so we have a choice of having no one attending, which is, would be a rarity for us, or, uh, attending their, um, metro meeting that they're hosting. Because we cycle, as you all know, we, we cycle through these, uh, every three months or so, uh, where each of the three, um, counties host it. But by doing that, that means that we're actually going to try to pull in the study session, the one from two weeks from now, where we're meeting with the auditors to do that during our board meeting.
Correct.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
The board meeting, um, next week, so...
And the auditors are prepared, so...
I'm sorry?
The auditors are pre- prepared.
I would hope they're prepared at this point.
Yeah.
They probably shared their, um, their results with the organization, and now it's to share it with the board. So, that's, we normally won't, wouldn't want to change a study session, but we're sort of stuck. Uh, we can't not show to the metro region, and we can't, and we can't not have a, an auditor's briefing. So, the game plan at this point, so I guess I'm doing more of an inform than I am a request, but I'm going to still ask for, uh, the board members here to approve a change in next week's agenda and in the study session. Basically, it's to, at next week's, I will, I will be looking for a motion for the board to make, um, on adding to next week's board meeting agenda, a briefing on the finance side for our auditors, BDO. And as well, not having our, uh, board study session in two weeks, because we will have accommodated the topic at hand, and then we'll be, uh, we'll need to know who is attend, well, we don't need to know who's attending. You'll need to be able to reach all of us.
That's crucial.
Um, to know how to connect to their virtual plan. So, I need a motion to approve the change in the agenda for next week to include the study session's topic of auditor, um, or, audi- auditor briefing.
And...
Thank you, Adam. Is there a second? Christina? Okay, thank you. Now, discussion on it. Yes, John?
So, this is their full walkthrough of the audit findings and letter?
Yep.
Plus, we're also adding Kalana's public comment?
Yep, but I think that one's, uh, going to be a bit shorter. Uh, we've not had a policy there, we've only had a practice. So it's a, it's a need to have a policy to back up the practice we've been following for at least the twelve years I've been around on the board.
And as a reminder, we're not going to have the stories that inspire hope with anticipation of the auditor.
Well, I think the audit's going to be pretty lengthy.
It, it can be.
Well, I, I, based on what we went through today, it...
Right.
I mean, there's still con, I think Patrick did a great job of clarifying, but I think before he did that, there was substantial confusion among our group
Mm-hmm.
about where we ended the year and where we're at. So, I'm fine with it, but it, it's going to be a long meeting, so we need to start on time and we need to move through. Because that's, we all need to walk out of here with the same numbers in our heads.
Yeah.
Not just, uh, why the same numbers? I mean, not just the same numbers, the why behind the same numbers.
Yeah, well, I want to get the same numbers, right?
And I'm fine with transparency.
Yeah.
I like transparency. So that's our biggest audience, so if that's when we do our audit discussion, then by golly, it may get ugly, but we'll do the audit discussion.
So we're going to do the finance and then audit separate, right? Or is this all going to be...
The audit is going to be, there's going to be no finance comport, portion?
But there were no contracts approved?
It's the audit, you're going to have BDO here, so the auditor...
Will be that part of it, okay.
Will be here, to give their findings and the report.
During the finance.
Yeah, and, and I will post that report in that management letter, um, in the packet this week, so you guys can, we'll have it by Wednesday.
It'll be boardable.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little reluctant on it as well, just because, you know, I, I think it deserves the time. You know, I, I don't like to pack a bunch of things, um, into one night. And I, it's one, that if we get through it and if we're here late, but then two, I don't want to give the presentation that it's just, we're going through the motions. You know, people, the finance piece is a very big piece of this organization. You know, an audit should be, um, you know, it, I mean, I, I, that's my concern, you know? I, I just don't want people to, to think, you know, that, one, and two. You know, we want to do our due diligence, you know, if we have to ask the questions. I mean, when it comes to the finance, you're not going to hear me, you know, apologize for asking any questions, because I think that's what we need to be doing, you know, as many and as long as it takes. Um, so I, I think that, you know, that's, that's my concern. I'm, I'm open to it, but, um, I, my preference would be to find another night to do it.
I'm pulling up the agenda just for your, uh, well, I'm not up there, but, um...
I was just looking at it.
I'm, so, you could forego the chair reports, because it's here, and it'd just be strictly the BDO and the public comment. And the executive committee was already abreast of some of the public comment stuff, correct?
Yes, we were.
So, you, and then just committee reports? And you can forego the committee reports, because you can just receive and file the committee reports, um, if they're written?
Yeah.
You can just receive and file those?
I mean, the benefit of the reports is for those that are watching.
Right.
We have the latitude to be able to read ahead and see what's, what's been published. Uh, it is for our public. So we'll be, I'll, I will compress the meeting as I can to allow us the maximum amount of audit time, because I don't want us to end that topic if we haven't satisfied all the questions. And it is an action item. Yes, sir?
And, and I, I think, do think is what, uh, my two compadres are saying, here in relation to the finance report, um, the audit and what have you, is for us to be able to leave with some sense of comfort, uh, that, one, what the is, what our deficit is, if in fact it will be a deficit, what plans we have, projected idea, wish, hope, to resolve the issue, so that, um, three months later, we don't come back and say, oh, okay? Uh, and, 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 and the projections can be something, what is? Because you're on both sides. But we definitely need to make sure that all of us walk out of here, w- w- I might get some on this, with a comfort of, of how we're doing it. And so I think that would be time well spent, well spent, uh, if we are doing it all next week and, and we get the audit report and what have you. But it, it has to be, here's where we are, this is where we think we're going to be. There are some variables that may change, but at least have a comfort level.
That's two different things, Pastor Jones.
Yes, um...
Right, the au- the audit is where we ended last year. What you're talking about is the next finance, which is next July tenth, right?
So actually, there are a couple of different things. The audit is about, is the big question. It is not a forensic study into how, what are our numbers and how good are our numbers? It's an audit. The audit is to identify and let us know how good the controls are that are in place, to know that you can trust the numbers that are being shared, whether you like the numbers or not. That's what an audit is. Now, the numbers that you're talking about would have to be numbers that come from Dana and the finance team about what their, their projections are. And I don't think that between today and next week, they're going to change their position on the two million dollars that they know of right now that's a deficit, except that they're one week closer, you know, one week beyond where we are right now. Um, so they may have some further insight, they may have some further guidance from the state in terms of, um, perhaps what the state is estimating in terms of, uh, reductions in the number of possible Medicaid folks. Um, like I was reading something tonight from Rhode Island, they published their estimated numbers of what they think their number is going to drop, the percentage of population, seven percent. I don't know if seven percent is high or low for them, let alone how will that impact us? So I wouldn't, I wouldn't take it to use that number, okay? Unless I did further due diligence. So, so we're talking about two different things at the board meeting. It is only, are the numbers accurate? Are the controls in place accurate or safe to make sure that we can trust the data being shared? That's what an audit is about. Having been an ex-auditor. Now, my firm fo- folded Arthur Andersen, but I was an ex-auditor.
So the next finance update will be July tenth, right?
Correct.
Committee of the Hall.
At the next Committee of the Hall.
Correct.
Yes. And we'll be that much closer to the year-end, and we're almost at budget time. So, I know the team is probably putting together budget stuff.
So the audit would be then the main thing on that agenda than that evening?
Correct.
So we wouldn't have a whole lot, so...
Yeah, so I'll, we can receive and file the committee reports, and then just, and then the only other thing that was considered for this agenda is the public comment that just got moved. So, but we could, but I'm go, the, I'm going to put the board packet, so you're going to have the audit and the management letter in Boardable by close of business Wednesday. So, um, any, what could help, though, is any questions received by Monday that our board might have that we could give to our leadership team or to the auditors to prepare to answer for you guys? That would, that's always helpful, that we can come in and share it in the open forum, any questions you guys might have ahead of time.
So they are not surprised.
Right.
And so they can answer them. Now, the wo, the line, the timeline that we were on before was study session at the end of the month, essentially, and then an approval of the audit, uh, in the July meeting. So, we're actually sooner, if we are in a position at this board meeting to vote to approve the audit report, then we will. If there are still plenty of open unanswered questions that we need to get answered, we still have, the next Committee of the Hall, we still have the next board meeting to approve the auditor's report.
Correct.
Okay?
Or if you feel like you didn't get enough, that they could come back.
Yeah, people love seeing auditors.
I don't know about you, but that's not me.
Um, other questions on this topic? Other comments? We have a motion on the floor. We ready to vote? Okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion to modify, uh, the agenda for next week, pulling in the BDO's seedment, I'm sorry, the BDO audit report? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I need one more motion, uh, to cancel the study session and the executive committee meeting?
That would be the next step, now that we've modified the agenda. So, I need a motion now to, um, let's see, cancel the study session that's in two weeks because of the metro meeting. I moved, thank you.
Support.
Any, any discussion? And you'll send out an email with the virtual contact information for their meeting?
Correct, yep.
Okay. On Boardable? Because I know so many people don't always go...
Yeah, I'll do it, she's transferring to Teams meeting, but I'll also add it to Boardable, the link.
Okay.
Also, um, just to keep in mind for next week, if you have any topics that you want at the metro meeting, bring, bring to next week, and I'll share with, with, I'll share with Dylan.
Okay. Um, so the next thing that I need to cover while I'm still on other business is to find out what is a doable date by the executive, by the CEO Evaluation Committee to pick up where we left off, because, uh, the meeting last week was canceled.
I need to look at my calendar. I don't, I'm old school, I use a paper calendar, yeah.
You didn't bring it with you?
No, I didn't.
The dog ate your homework?
Yeah, it's in the car.
I can throw... I can throw out a couple dates and see if you guys, yeah.
Because Dennis isn't here either.
Right. So, we can, by next Tuesday, I'll try to throw out a couple of dates at you guys to see what works. If you can want to throw some dates at me and then we'll go from there.
Sheila, do you need a motion to cancel the executive committee meeting as well?
Yes. Yes, please.
Yep. Dennis tells me that if we were going to meet the CEO Evaluation Committee next week, Wednesday at 4:30, he could make that.
I don't. I got to look at my calendar.
You've got to work before you get here, right?
Yeah. 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 4:30, that's, that is another thing because I know we were going to talk about committee assignments that, that traffic with I-75 has just gotten horrible this summer. So, I mean, for me to be on the finance committee is very difficult because we always have that at the start of the cow meeting. So, you know, without me using vacation time to get out of here, to get out early. So, I, you know, I know Pastor Jones needs a committee assignment, so if he's interested in finance and maybe I switch over to policy, but, but on that note, I would need it to be at least five, five at the earliest. 5:30 would be preferable.
So, in prior years, we, whoever ran the, whoever chaired the cow meeting in general, their area went first. So, if it was policy, policy topics went first, then finance topics went second. And if it was finance that or treasury that went first, theirs went first and policy went second. So, we used to trade off.
We could still.
Still make.
That should work.
And some people can make one and belay to the other and.
Or could switch them in general.
I mean, I'm open either way. I just, you know, I usually listen in my car anyways, but I want to be able to, you know. I'm asking questions to my radio, so it's like, you know, but, so I just wanted to throw that out there, but we can, I can talk with Pastor Jones about that and see what he's interested in. Well, we do, it's with the cow, so it's just at the start of the cow, so you just would have to be here at 4:30, you know, or as close to as possible. It's difficult for me.
Dr. Giles also needs a committee assignment?
And again, it would have been this meeting where we covered half the topics of finance and half the topics on policy.
Yep.
Okay. So, something more to talk about when we put the agendas together, I guess. So, the other question that we had that Adam raised was since we're no longer going to meet for the, for the study session, do we still meet for the executive committee as well on next, two weeks Thursday? If there's a need to that. I know we can't do it remote because we're helped by the OMA, Open Meetings Act, but is there a motion to cancel the executive meeting that Thursday? No, I'm asking if there is one. Because there are three of us on that committee that are still here, but, you know, if you are interested, you can make that motion. Let's see if there's even a second. John Paul, question?
No, I'm just looking at the agenda.
For the executive committee?
Yeah, for the executive committee.
Because that would normally be at 4:30 or 5:00.
It's at 5:00.
At 5:00. And we'd have to be here for 5:00, but then the 6:00 meeting, which would be the Detroit Wayne, the metro meeting, most of them is virtual. So, you could take that on your, on your ride back, if you will.
All, that's on the agenda right now is the approval of July meetings, but you guys approve the calendar, but they switched, so I could, I could bring them for a quick vote next week if, if you wanted.
Because we'd still give us time to cancel it.
Yeah.
If needed to. So, we can defer on your question.
Or if, yeah, okay. Yeah. That's fine.
Is that what you prefer at this point? Okay.
And always if anything comes up emergent, Ms. Lazenby will, we can always call a meeting.
Yep. Okay. Well, then it sounds like I've completed the items. There will be no motion on the executive board meeting. We don't have one for evaluation yet, so we'll defer on those. So, that's exhausted the other business. We move on to local public comment. Is there one, anyone in the audience that wishes to make public comment? Is there, not seeing anyone, is there anyone online that wishes to make public comment? Not hearing anything, we'll move on to board member comment.
One second.
Did I miss something on here?
There is. Oh, you're good. They didn't say anything.
Okay. I'm not used to running the Committee of the Hall meeting. Is there a topic?
I also need all the confidential things that I passed out back.
Okay. Is there, well, we're not over yet.
Oh, I'm just thinking.
But the question is, is there something on the agenda that's not on my sheet that would be the director's report? Okay. Not seeing anything. And she's standing, moving on it. Is there any board member comments? Hearing none, we are in adjourn.
Gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, thank you for everyone who contributed to the reports tonight. I appreciate the work of the staff. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make board member comment? If not, we are in adjournment.